I'll figure it out. It's beautiful. Well, no, 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 this wasn't. This was the first floor was behind the break wall. They had a deck in the morning. So they're saying what they want.
I have not.
I'm trying to wait.
I'll figure it out.
I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out.
City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Grover.
Just here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Burris.
Here.
Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Here.
Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Nine to zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, October 29, 2012 meeting. Special City Council meeting to discuss the budget. City Manager, would you like to start?
Point of order? Point of order?
You're not on the council.
Doesn't matter. This is a question of law. This is an open meeting within the meaning of the Open Meetings Act. Where in this agenda is the opportunity for the public to address public officials?
That was decided several years ago by the council that we would, when we had a special city council meeting to discuss the budget, that we would not have citizen comment at that time. There isn't a time for citizen comment. Mr. Bobkowitz, when will that be?
On the Saturday, November the 10th.
It has to be at this meeting. This is a meeting of a majority of a quorum of the public body held to discuss public business.
No, it does not have to be at this meeting.
Therefore, it falls under the definition of meeting within the meaning of the Open Meetings Act. As a matter of law, you are required to comply with all of the sections of the Open Meetings Act.
Mr. Farrar, would you like to respond to this? Thank you.
And it is not a matter of whether you act, it is a matter of whether you discuss.
There is no requirement for citizen comment at this meeting, and there's nothing that she can cite to that provides same.
Thank you.
Section 2.06, Part G of the Open Meetings Act.
We have had a ruling from our attorney, Mr. Bobkowitz.
Your attorney did not read the law, and he cited no authority whatsoever. I am telling you which section of the Open Meetings Act requires that any member of the public may address public officials. That is Section 2.06G of the Open Meetings Act.
You have heard my ruling. I chair this meeting, and you have heard from our attorney.
Then you are welcome to answer to the Attorney General. Is that worth taxpayer money? You are discussing the budget today, and for the few minutes worth of public comment, you would rather have the Attorney General investigate whether or not you're violating the Open Meetings Act, which you are.
The Attorney General is always welcome to investigate.
By denying public comment, you are standing in violation of the Open Meetings Act. Is that your decision?
Yes.
All right. You're welcome to answer to the Attorney General and the State's Attorney.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I am proud to be here this evening as we begin the budget process for fiscal year 2013. Have a number of slides to share with you this evening, but I wanted to come down to give an overview of really what I perceive as the state of the city's budget process and where we are with the budget as we look toward fiscal year 2013, and then Mr. Lyons will come and talk about some of the more specific issues. So we'll give you an overview of the state of the city, and Mr. Lyons will give you an overview specifically focusing on the general fund, then followed by other funds, the capital improvement program. We'll review the upcoming budget discussion schedule, and then we'll have questions. As the mayor indicated, a couple of years ago, the council decided to have this first workshop to yourselves, to hear the presentations from staff, to ask questions. It's been past practice that the council usually has very detailed questions. We then take those questions, respond in writing, make that information available to you and members of the public. We're certainly prepared to follow that again this evening. As you know, we started this year's budget process with another community engagement process. We stood in front of community facilities. We asked people for their comments online, in writing, and by telephone, and we received many comments from Evanston residents about the budget. At your places this evening are a summary of the comments that we received, as well as some responses to those comments, where we're going to be putting that up on our website if it's not already, it is already this evening, on the website. And as you can see, 13 pages worth of comments and ideas, 80 specific comments and suggestions. And our commitment to the community and to you is to make sure that we provide responses to each of those ideas, and so you will see over the course of 13 pages, the 80 ideas and the 80 responses. As we go through the deliberation of the budget over the next few weeks, we can probably point to several points that came up through the discussions we have with members of the public. So we thank those residents of Evanston that came forward and offered their suggestions, and again, we incorporated many of them into the budget deliberations. Far as state of the city is concerned, we're going to talk about revenues, expenditures, program issues, and future opportunities. On the revenue side, we're very happy to report that things have really leveled off, that this year we believe that this budget can be balanced without a property tax increase of any sort. In the past several years, we've had property tax increases for debt and for capital, capital debt and pension debt, but we are presenting a budget this evening that contains no such increase. On the levels of fees and charges, we're also recommending no substantial increases to fees and charges. There are some selected fees within the Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Department that have been adjusted, mostly based on costs associated with those programs increasing, but by and large, our fees and charges are remaining the same. The city council approved a few years ago a plan for adjustments to the water and sewer rate. We are recommending that those fees not be raised on January 1st, but instead be raised on July 1st, that the health of those funds are such that we believe that a six-month delay is appropriate for the imposition of the water and sewer feed increases. Revenues regarding the state and federal government, again, I think we try to be as aggressive as we can be with those kind of grants and aid. Admittedly, those are becoming more and more difficult to get, and we'll continue to be diligent, but certainly the days that funds from the state or federal government are, make a significant impact on the city budget are really behind us, and we are looking toward revenues that are locally produced.
Excuse me, Alderman Rainey, did you?
I think I should wait.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, sorry.
In areas of other non-tax revenues, again, we try to be aggressive with fees and charges, and quite honestly, we feel that over the last several years, we have been very aggressive, and we are not, again, recommending any significant changes there. So as far as the revenues are concerned, remain largely flat. We do not believe, again, it's necessary to recommend a general property tax increase. Things are stable, and it's nice to be here before you this evening and say that we feel that revenues are stable. On the expenditure side, again, we feel that we've been able to keep a cap on that. We have, through negotiations, been able to provide our employees general salary increases. We're very proud of that. They are probably on the lower end of what some communities are receiving, but certainly in the private sector, there are still many folks getting no salary increases. So we think that on the personnel cost side, that things are fair. We continue to be concerned about health benefit costs. We joined a cooperative a few years back, which I think, which has helped stabilize our health benefit costs, but I think we need to continue to be vigilant. We are focusing on areas of wellness with our employees, which we've not really done in the past, and we hope that that will have an impact on our personnel costs as well. As I said a year ago to you with the presentation of the 2012 budget, that any additional reductions would have severely impacted quality of life in Evanston, and I think that the budget that was adopted in '12 really came to a point where we could continue to provide quality services, but really that was the floor of that. I think this budget, in talking with the mayor earlier today, we've kind of leaned off the gas a little bit, that we're making some adjustments to the budget, some additional reductions, but really nothing on in a significant way. So we believe this budget continues to allow us to provide quality public services without providing additional reductions. Efficiencies and innovation, I'm very proud of the staff of the city of Evanston. I can go through nearly every single department and talk about ways, within the last 12 months, 24 months, 36 months, that our departments are doing business in a more efficient and effective way. Our departments are being innovative, thinking about different ways to provide services, and I think that in part has helped us be able to continue to provide such a high level of quality service with the reductions that we've had. So my thanks to all the staff of the city of Evanston for their hard work. These have been very difficult times. I'm making my semi-annual tour of talking with all city staff, and really, to a person in every single department, there's a real sense of relief that their hard work, that their willingness to do more with less, their willingness to be innovative and creative, is really starting to pay off without additional reductions, without significant additional layoffs. There's a feeling in the organization as well, that I think all the work that we've done with efficiencies and innovation have really helped us get the job done. And then finally, the role of this city council. The city council's been very aggressive in looking at issues, looking at programs, supporting innovation, supporting how we try to do business in different ways. Again, you can look at nearly every department, and this city council has been very supportive of staff's efforts to try to provide the best quality services that we can. So on behalf of all the staff, I thank you for that support. We would not be here tonight with the budget that we are without your consistent support, in some cases, making some very difficult decisions over the last couple of years, but I believe those difficult decisions have paid off, that has provided us a much more manageable budget, both on the revenue and expenditure side. However, with the good comes the not-so-good, and we still face some significant challenges, and I'd like to spend a few minutes this evening talking about those challenges, but with those challenges, I also see that there are some future opportunities, and I'd also like to spend a few minutes talking about that. Probably the number one challenge, which really hasn't changed in the three and a half years I've been your city manager, is issues of debt. The city council has really taken a very critical eye to our issues of debt, and as you all know, that really comes into two buckets. One is our capital spending, and the other is for police and fire pensions, but really all of our employee pensions. We've tried to get a handle on the capital spending. I think we have a much more realistic capital improvement program. There's still work to be done with that. As you know, we've hired a new city engineer who will be starting with us at the first part of December, and I think that his skills and abilities will be very helpful as we continue to refine our capital planning process. I think we need to be as thoughtful as we can about the spending that we're making. We have reduced the amount of general obligation debt issued each year. We're proposing a number this evening with this budget in the 6 million-plus range, 62, 63, somewhere in that neighborhood, which I think is a very responsible number. There are clearly lots of additional capital needs in the community, but we have to balance that with the very large capital debt we continue to carry. So it remains an issue. I think we're dealing with it responsibly. In the area of pensions, there was some discussion by the council when you received the actuarial study specifically on the police and fire pensions. There were three numbers offered by the actuarial. The number that was, was the highest number was still $700,000 less than what we were paying this year, and the council met and discussed that and was unable to come up with a recommendation on that evening. You left it in my hands, and I'm recommending to you with this budget that we put in an additional $500,000 into the police and fire pension funds, and this budget is balanced with that $500,000. My sense was, really looking at the council, that it was sort of a Goldilocks. Some council members were a little bit on the lower side, some wanted the full $700,000. You know, my sense is that $500,000 is prudent. As you heard the actuary say, the number has only a small dent in our overall pension obligation, but I think it sends a clear message. It sends a message that this city is serious about pension debt, and this city's going to do what it can within the constraints of everything else that we're trying to juggle to make sure that those numbers are taken care of. So we're recommending at the budget this evening that that be an additional $500,000 be put above and beyond the actuary's recommendation. Other challenges, I think, fall under the area of community services. Many of our departments are, I think, working in a very strong place. I think the area was within our Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Department, under the banner of community services, are really the most at risk, and I think they're at risk because of changing populations, they're at risk because of changing budgets, but as they are at risk, so are the people that we serve in our community. And I think as we move forward as a community and as a city government, the areas under our community services banner are the ones that we need to look at, we need to nurture, and we need to support as best we can, because it is those services that are serving those Evanston residents who are most in need. And so some of the adjustments that you see in this proposed budget go toward these areas, and let me kind of walk through them. The area of at-risk and at-need families. The city council added this area as a city council goal, and I'm proposing that we add one position within the Health Department solely to work on the area of at-risk families and at-risk individuals. We've had a position, have a position, that deals with at-risk individuals and families that are seniors, but that position really has become overwhelmed, and I think that it makes sense for us to look at ways that we could do a better job with all families and individuals who are not seniors. I reached out to the Mental Health Board a number of months ago about this issue. They recommended three additional staff members, and I don't believe that we're in a position to do that at this point, but I think spending additional resources in this area is very critical to serve the needs of Evanston residents. Second, in the area of senior programs, I think we provide wonderful services to our seniors of today. I fear, however, that because of the spectacular demand for our senior programs, we're not spending any time looking at the future, not looking at any time to be innovative and creative. We do a great job of serving today, but I don't think that we're planning as well for the future as we need to. So there are some adjustments in the budget to provide additional hours of work in various positions at the Levy Center to largely free up Christina Farraro, our senior program manager, to begin to do a little bit more that she's had the luxury of doing in the past, and that is to look forward, to be innovative, to be creative, so that as our senior population continues to change in Evanston, we as the city of Evanston can continue to make sure the programs we provide for that changing population continue to be as stellar as the programs we provide today. Next, in the area of youth engagement, we spent, have spent a lot of energy and effort, and this current year, 2012 budget, has significant new dollars that we have spent on our youth and young adult programs. There's still work to be done. Mayor Tisdale has been hosting a series of public meetings, not only that started regarding race issues in Evanston, but after that horrible shooting of just a month or two ago now, an additional community dialogue on what we can do to help make Evanston a safer place. So there is not a lot of ads here in this area with the idea that the city council probably after the first of the year will be looking at recommendations from the mayor on additional resources in this area. So it remains an issue. I think the staff mix that we have is working and working well, but there's additional things that need to be done, and I would imagine that the city council, again, after the first of the year, will be spending some time talking about those things. Next, services to our Latino population, another area that was added to the city council's goals for the coming year. While there's no additional resources being requested in this budget, I think it clearly is a focus for us, and want to say that we need a lot, we need to do a lot to reach out to a very ever-changing and growing Latino population in Evanston. I think we have resources that will get us well underway. It's likely, though, I think during 2013, it is an issue we'll continue to talk about and look toward being creative, continuing to partner with existing organizations and with new partners to best serve our Latino population. Next, after the community services area, are our issues of safety, and we're very fortunate in the city of Evanston to have an outstanding police department and an outstanding fire department, but again, I don't believe we can rest on our laurels with the outstanding services that both those departments provide, that we need to continue to be vigilant to make sure that resources are available to both the police and fire department to do their jobs. The police department has had really an opportunity to expend resources as they feel appropriate. Fortunately, the latitude that Chief Eddington has needed to address the issues as they've come down the pike this past year has not been significant latitude, but he's had that latitude, and I want to make sure, and this budget maintains, that he has the latitude to assign overtime, to assign special details to areas of concern. I never want you as the city council or Evanston residents to ever be concerned that the Evanston Police Department doesn't have the resources it needs to get the job done, and I believe we're at a point where that can happen. On the fire side, the city council has approved a new agreement that will allow our firefighters to have much more regular, hands-on training through the use of the facilities in Skokie. I think that's a critical element to keeping our fire department, their skills and abilities among the best in Illinois, and I think with that additional training, that will happen. We've been very good about making sure that equipment is available to them. We've been perhaps not as good about dealing with the facility issues in the fire department, and we'll continue to be mindful of making investments at the fire station. But the issues of safety, clearly, the residents of Evanston want first and foremost to know they live in a safe community. They want to know that if harm comes to them, either to members of their family themselves, that there's going to be a police officer there, there's going to be a paramedic there. We are able to do that now, but I think investments are going to be very much needed in order to maintain that as we move forward. Finally, the last challenge that I see is the state of Illinois. There's been lots of press over the last few weeks, several months, continuing to say over and over again that the state of Illinois perhaps is the greatest state in the nation in fiscal distress, the greatest state that is not dealing with its debt. the nation in fiscal distress, the greatest state that is not dealing with its debt, the greatest state that really does not have a handle on how to deal with its debt. In my experience working in the state of California, having seen what California has been through to go through trying to deal with its problems, local governments have been severely impacted. And I think it's fair to say that when that day comes, that the Illinois General Assembly finally does come to grips, and not just with pensions, but really with their overall operations, there's going to be an impact on local governments. And we need to continue to keep our reserves at a place that is comfortable, and I think this budget continues to do that. But it's going to happen one night, and we're going to wake up in the morning and find out that it's happened to us, because unfortunately, that is the way the Illinois General Assembly works. We will lobby, the mayor will be diligent, we will do all the right things, and we will wake up one morning and find out that we have lost millions of dollars in funding. And we won't have any notice, and we'll have to try to grapple with that. And we need to be as diligent as we can to try to make that not happen, but also be wise enough to understand that the likelihood of it happening in the next couple of years is pretty high. And your staff wants to make sure that when that day comes, that we are not crippled as an organization, that we have strategies and alternatives and plans in place that will allow us to transition, if it's a dramatic cut in state funding and state revenue sharing, that we have a way to deal with that without curtailing critical services to Evanston So let me end by positives. While there are several challenges ahead of us, clearly, our opportunities in the city of Evanston far outweigh those challenges. In the area of economic development and job creation, I think we are well on our way to being smart in how we deal with the changing markets. I am concerned, however, that we continue to be mindful of job creation, that it's great to have new retail, it's great to have new restaurants, it's great to have wonderful apartments that are going up. But we need to also have the ability to have jobs here. We need to have the ability, that is Northwestern University, one of our greatest economic assets, that we need to continue to be able to leverage that. And if we don't have places for those jobs to go, and they go to other communities, I think that that is a caution to what is otherwise an opportunity for us. I think the opportunity is to continue to have a balanced economy in Evanston that has good places to live, has good places to shop, has good places to eat, but also has places with good-paying jobs. And I think if we can continue to be mindful of that balance, it clearly is an opportunity. On the opportunity side, again, in the area of community services, visual and performing arts really are an element of economic development for us. And when you think of things that people continue to come to Evanston for and will come to Evanston for in even greater numbers, I think our arts community is a big part of that. And I think there's lots of initiatives currently underway that will help support that effort, and I think that's a critical piece to our future. Next is the area of selling water. We've been talking about this. We gave a report to the council a few months back. We are now in serious stages of discussion with partner communities, 11 different partner communities, about selling water. And in order to do that, we're going to have to join with them to make major capital improvements to get water from this part of Cook County to the far western part of Cook County. And that will cost hundreds of millions of dollars, and it will be a very complex project. But the upside for the city of Evanston is tremendous. And I think that we need to continue to be on that course, and I appreciate the support of the city council as we move forward with these initial discussions. But 2013, I think, will see a lot of activity in the area of water sales, and want to highlight that as a tremendous opportunity for our community. The area of innovation, I think more and more people are continuing to look to Evanston as being an innovative place, where difficult solutions are tackled in innovative ways, not only throughout Illinois but throughout the United States. And I only see that continuing. I think among our departments, we have some of the brightest, most talented employees, certainly in Illinois, but, you know, we have a collection of employees that I would say are among the brightest and talented of any city our size in America. And I want to make sure we bring more of those people here to Evanston and continue to create an environment that people can be innovative, they can be collaborative, because I think that's going to be a very big hallmark for us as a community going forward. And then lastly, the area partnerships. We've talked a little bit about what we're doing with Skokie, but I think there's a lot more that we can do, being good partners with the public sector, other villages and cities around us, but also the private sector as well. We don't have monopoly on the best way to provide service. There are communities around us that do innovative things. We need to join with them. We need to join with them to create new innovations. And I think partnerships are going to be a very critical element, not only public sector to public sector, but also working more closely with the nonprofit sector. I think the work our Youth and Young Adult Program group has done over the past several months has really been able to identify new and innovative ways to work for the nonprofit sector, and I think also as we continue to look with base to partner with the private sector. So Madam Mayor, members of the council, a brief overview of where I think we're going, a brief introduction to this year's budget. It is a budget, I think, that really is something that is a stark change from the budgets unfortunately I've had to present to you the last couple of years. I think this is a budget that represents a city on the move. It's a budget that represents stability. It's a budget that represents the foundation for us to do even greater things as a community over time, but doing it in such a way that we're mindful of the tax impacts on our residents, the fee impacts on our residents. It's a difficult mix. It's a difficult brew to come up with, but I feel very confident that the budget we're presenting to you this evening goes a long way to accomplish that. So to give you some more details, I'd like to introduce Marty Lyons, the Chief Financial
Thank you, Mr. Rothwitz, Madam Mayor, Clerk Green, members of the council. As the city manager pointed out, this is a stable budget. And as we go through the slides, what we'll go through is the general fund first, and then we'll have a brief overview of other funds, finishing up with a discussion on As we go through the overview, because we're being brief, I've also put page numbers here for every one of the areas in the budget book where you can find this information. $248 million for the whole budget, all funds. That's compared to $258 million as it was amended for 2012, so a decrease of $10 million. Now, that does include our inter-fund transfers, but we are still lower than the previous year. General fund revenues, as we pointed out, those are very stable from the previous year, almost exactly on top of the previous year. General fund expenses, with the settlement of all of our labor agreements, were up about a point and a half, one and a half percent, if you look at our budget compared to last year at 85,079. That is the amount requested. That is not the amount that is there after we're done with our budget balancing exercise. So that creates our deficit of $941,000. And as I've talked about in a few of the ward meetings, that's a far cry from three years ago when it was 10 times that big. It was $9.5 million three years ago. So we, in reviewing the budget, discussing all of the expenses and revenues with staff, with the departments, we came up with just under $968,000, sorry, $969,000 in reductions. Those are a combination of revenue increases and expenditure decreases. And later on in this presentation, we do have that worksheet for you to take a look at.
Mr. Lyons, Alderman Rainey has a question.
I've had this question since I first saw the budget. So since you have page 18 up there, I would like you to explain something to me. I'm not afraid to ask a dumb question. So on page 18, under Citywide Enhanced Collections, you have a line that says, "Net impact of 2002 C bond refunding per levy deferral assumes $500,000 increase to police and fire pension funding, assumes abatement of $685,000 in debt service payment due to 2012 bond refunding." Can you explain that to me?
Yes.
Okay. I knew you could.
When we did the 2011 levy, we had set amounts of debt to be levied for-
The 2011?
2011.
Okay.
When we did the 2011 levy, we had a set amount for debt, set amount for pensions, and the remainder was the general fund. And that's what went into the 2012 budget. At that time, we had no way of knowing what would be the results of our refunding. In the summer, in June, we refunded 2002 C bonds, but we also levied for them in 2011. We did not know if we would refund. We ended up saving 8% on interest costs. So in effect, we levied in 2011 for bonds that were in turn refunded.
I got it.
So that means that we get to take a break this year. The debt didn't go away, but we get to take that break this year because of the refunding. Is that sufficient?
Yes, I could not figure that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Go ahead.
So just from a table standpoint, Mr. Lyons loves tables, that's, they always have to be in presentations for me. When you look at where we are at presently, you'll see that the amended budget proposes that $1,750,000 deficit, but that really is a transfer of surplus that was heading to the Capital Projects Fund and the Equipment Replacement Fund. Our estimates came in much closer to that, and I will get to that in a moment in another slide. But this, when you see our estimated actual, we're looking at a net operating surplus of 1.1 million, meaning how did our departments do? So they did very well. And then when you add in those two transfers, we are at a deficit that is under $600,000 when by budget it would be more than $1 million. And, you know, there's every chance right now, each month, we've been giving the monthly financial reports, and we're due for a quarterly report coming up for the third quarter. So we're very confident in being able to make that net 1.1, $1,161,000, to be able to make that number. What does that really mean? What it really means is, is that on page 43 of the budget, it shows our fund balance in the general fund. And at the end of 2011, it was at $18.3 million. And at the end, the proposed end of 2013, it'll be at $18.6 million, or an increase of $300,000. So when we say stable, we're not, we are talking over the three-year timeframe that revenues, expenses, and our reserves are all stable through that timeframe. Alderman Rainey, to your point, this was the table that also would hopefully explain a little bit of that. When you're looking at the bottom line, which is our debt service, right along here, the $10 million, you see that basically we have a flat amount from the 2011 to the 2012. And that's, that would have been up closer to about $12.6, $12.7 million for our debt service, had we not done the refunding. So then, just to connect a few of the other dots, what we are seeing in our budget balancing worksheet is, we can, as you can see, you can add all the way up to $42,529 and have a 0% tax levy increase. So what we're proposing is a $500,000 increase to be split between the pension funds, and we will still have a slight property tax decrease with that change.
Mayor?
Alderman Rainey.
Marty, did I, do I recall correctly that our percentage of the total tax bill is going to increase even though we're having a slight decrease in the total levy?
That was actually our projection when we still had the refunding not included. We are still slightly above 20%, and while I've been here, we have been below the 20%. So we're a little bit above where we were in '08, '09. But we're, and that is, Lou, do you have that number? I don't know if we have the percentage.
Current percentage is 21.8.
Yeah.
21.8.
That's as high as I can ever remember.
Well, actually, I know that we were much higher in the 90s.
Must have been when I wasn't here.
I will distribute to the council the 20-year chart that we had. When we took it out at this point in time, it'd been very flat for the last five years. So in trying to keep the book a little bit smaller, we've removed a few of the charts. So does anyone have any questions regarding general fund? I'm going to jump to the other funds. As you can see, we really do see that there's not that much from a balancing perspective, and we'll get to that worksheet to discuss regarding the general fund. Special revenue funds, for those that don't remember, those are our grant funds, our Economic Development Funds, E911. Those funds with a designated revenue that aren't necessarily an enterprise fund, like water, sewer, and parking. So those funds are all in relatively good shape. Our Economic Development Fund is very stable. E911 has been accomplishing all of its mission as far as having an up-to-date center, yet still, it has still maintained its fund balance. Our grants, those of you on the Grants Committee know that we took a hit the year before last, but this year was fairly stable with our grants. We are still, we are starting to wind down with some of the grants, the HPRP, Steve, HPRP Housing? Yeah, the Rapid Rehousing Grant. That one's done this year, and we're in the third year right now of the NSP2 grant. Regarding our debt service funds, as noted, our debt service fund itself, very stable this year. Our debt service fund also includes our TIF funds in the definition. You will see in this budget a lot of capital projects in the TIF funds for this year. We are really pushing those funds as an engine to help develop several areas within the community. As we noted earlier, the capital projects funds, for the most part, this is our capital improvements fund. And just one note on that fund, we are looking at about a $5.9 million request for bonds this year. However, we did modify last year's, it's actually this year's, the June, July 2012 request. It was only $3.9 million in bonds that were for the capital improvements fund. So we went below our $5 million target this year, and we're asking to go above the $5 million target for 2013, but we will still be, over those two years, at a $5 million target for the capital improvements fund. And we are retiring more bonds than that amount, and that's critical to keep our debt service decreasing. The enterprise fund, as the city manager noted, 3% water rate increase last, this past summer helped out tremendously to get our volume. Our pumpage was back up to historical levels. That not only helped us with the water rate change, but we are also looking, it's not in the proposed budget, but we will continue to monitor it, reducing the sewer fund bond issue, which we had a four-year bond issue of $4 million, $5 million, then $4 million and $4 million. We're hoping that this last year, that we might be able to cut that in half in the final budget document, reducing that bond issue by $2 million. So water, sewer, and parking funds are all in very good shape right now for this year. We know we have long-term issues with our infrastructure in those funds. Then finally, our internal service funds. We do have work to do on our fleet fund. We have funding issues that we'll be working on long-term with both fleet maintenance. However, we did, in the Equipment Replacement Fund, catch up. We did $2.4 million plus in equipment this year, and we plan to do a similar amount for 2013 to help with our equipment, to have the fleet modernized. It will not completely catch us up, but we will be in much better shape than we were in the last two to three years. The city manager has discussed the pension issue, and we can talk about that a little bit later. I have met with both pension boards. I delivered to them the proposed budget. For them, it's a matter of disclosure. They are not required to adopt a budget and then send it to the council. They are not required to adopt a budget and then send it to the council. They are required to give the mayor, before we adopt a levy, a certification of the current year. I'm sorry, of the most previous year, how the fund operated. And that is, it should be on your desk this week. We delivered those last week in both pension board meetings. So, I'm hopeful that both presidents will forward those on to you. We did work-
Alderman Rainey, excuse me, Marty has another question.
Can you just warn us, was the news good or bad? Did, on the pension funds?
Our investments are doing well. And part of that is what happened on 12/31/2011. Well, it was a horrible day for the market overall. So, part of our gains this year, we look a lot better. But part of it is because we looked bad on the last day of the year, when they take a snapshot. We are, I just got done looking at the third quarter reports with both pension boards, and both are looking very favorable for the year.
And what does that mean, Marty? What does that mean?
What that means is-
We used the 7%. How did they do?
They will beat the 7%. If they could close the year today, they would beat the 7%.
The markets were closed today, so.
Okay, true enough. But what that means to the fund long-term is, is that's actuarialized in. We only get a little percent of it.
I know, we keep being told that, but, you know, I mean, I'm looking at the reality of the whole thing. How did they do?
I will tell you that as far as investments-
They did better than 7%.
The glass is half-full for our investments this year.
Okay, well, then, it won't be so scary.
What would it take, Marty, for us to get over 50% funded, which is my goal?
You asked the actuary that same question, Madam Mayor.
I keep hoping for an answer.
And I am not a certified fellow. The, when I look at that, and we add up our, what we have to do is take a look at our, the value of our assets in the fund compared to the value of the liabilities. And the assets are more known to us. The liabilities are our projection going out all those years. But in order, we need to take those. If you want to be above 50%, I would take the value of the assets, or rather, the liabilities, and divide them by two, and we would have to put that much money into the bank. So, if we were 4.5% below, which is about where we're at, and it was $100 million, then we'd need $4.5 million to get ourselves to 50% funded.
Isn't the actuary supposed to be giving us a path that will eventually get us there?
Yes.
But we don't have any definition of when eventually.
Yeah, well, we do have a definition, and that is, is that with our new format, meaning the last two years, we are trying to get to 90% funded over 30 years on as flat of a curve as possible, as opposed to a curve that goes up with a big balloon payment at the end. Our new methodology is to really take that balloon payment out. So, it means a little bit higher payments now. We end up paying less interest when we do that. But our goal on the, instead of a level percent of payroll, a level dollar amount of payroll, we're trying to catch up on an even pace throughout those 30 years. Well, we get, if, if we beat or made our assumptions over the next three to four years, we would probably get to 50%. We would just have to make our assumptions.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey, did you have another?
Or we could pay $70 million today and, in a moment of time, be 50% funded. I mean, you know, so, I mean, it's really simple. It's only going to be for that day, almost, that we're 50% funded because-
But I'd be so happy on that day.
So, this is the big picture, all of our funds. And as you can see, the general fund is our largest operation. And then, you have our water and sewer funds representing a very large portion of our operations. Happy to answer any questions. But I'll leave it at that. And then, I'm going to go to the budget balancing worksheet. Mr. City Manager, would you want me to walk through this part of it?
You bet.
All right. So, in order to balance our $941,000 deficit, as has been the case, is we look at citywide revenues and expenditures, and then, department-based revenues and expenditures. We were successful last year in hiring a contractual, not a city employee, a contractual collector who had about a $2.5 to $1, Lou, was it? $2.5 to $1.00 spent on collections? So, we wanted, we want it to be even higher. So, we are going to continue those efforts and expand his role in collecting in all areas. So, we are looking at $200,000. When you look at that, that's not a huge number, in that, that's about 0.3%. So, we're not trying to balance the budget by just saying we will collect all of our accounts receivables. But we are going to continue that effort. Again, this is the, earlier, what I explained was the net impact of 2002 C, the refunding. We would actually propose that we take the difference between the $500,000 and the decrease in the debt service and raise the general fund levy by $185,000. That's what that does. Overall, the entire levy would remain flat. As we go through the rest of this, we are continuing to look at reductions in a variety of areas. Our cell phone stipends, those expenses have continued to decrease. We have a new IT manager, and we are looking to him to continue to consolidate our resources and reduce our expenses on peripheral devices. The increase in transfer to the fleet fund, that is just to help that fund, which is currently running a slight, running a deficit. So, we feel that we, that's a negative because it's against us in trying to balance. And then, this year is the first year we are looking at a process of utilizing vacancy savings. And I'd like to drop back a little bit to another slide. The third column, where we show the $1.16 million surplus. Previous year, that was $1.8 million. Departments have done an excellent job in using the staff they need to get their work done. And we have had vacancies, and we have utilized them. And what this means is that we are going to be looking at budgeting salaries at 99.5% instead of at 100%. In an organization with 700-plus employees, it's difficult to have all positions filled at all time. We also are looking to beef up our MWEBE compliance work. That is not projected to be an in-house employee. That's projected to be compliance support. We are looking to reduce the cable television agreement by $50,000. The city, city staff will take over some duties. As we go down to administrative services, this is where we have a reduction in the IT department.
Marty, Alderman Burris has a question.
Hi. Could you explain what the contract compliance officer does? Just more detail about that?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Who is it? Where do we find him?
Where is Joe?
Send Joe home.
Oh, you sent Joe home? Well, I do have a little bit of knowledge of him. We are looking to-
He's got it. Thank you.
One of the parts of our MWEBE program that has been the least successful is the compliance on the contractor end. After the contract has been let, and the payrolls have been paid, and whether or not they actually performed up to their 25% goal level. And so, that's going out and doing the payroll compliance audits onsite or having those firms deliver those payrolls to us. That's probably the main job. Alderman Braithwaite and Joe McCray and I had a couple of meetings discussing this because it was a part of the MWEBE Commission discussions. I think that was the largest issue. And if that's done, one of the other things we hope we can do is have Joe McCray and the purchasing staff do a lot more, and the economic development staff, do a lot more on outreach, where we have the loop completely closed. Here's what we want you to do. Here's what you did. When there's no mystery to it, we think we'll have better bids as they come in, as all vendors are aware of what our program is.
Can I ask you a follow-up? Are there penalties for non-compliance? I recently heard a news art story about non-compliance in the city of Chicago, and there were substantial fines.
Yes, there are penalties. One of our increases in the administrative services area is to increase mobile computing. You've seen some of our, maybe you haven't seen, we are continuing to expand utilization of tablets that will help all of our field personnel be active. And all of the field departments who went to, now, it's been more than 15 years ago, went to NextTels. And that, that technology is becoming passe. We're looking at new ideas for how to keep tho, all of those people in the field connected and bring it to another generation. So, Jose Calderon is charged with that, along with Parks, Recs, Community Services, Public Works, Community and Economic Development, and Utilities. They're all going to be looking at how they do their mobile communications. I'm sorry.
And health.
Oh, and health, thank you. I thought you said help. And our health department. And then, finally, the above-mentioned $200,000 in increased costs. We did increase collections. We did not have the collections coordinator position in the baseline budget. That's a contractual position. So, it's a net of $140,000 benefit for the increased collection activities. Community and Economic Development, we are looking at the reduction of one planner position. And we are looking at the reduction in our code enforcement area of a inspector, customer service supervisor. Finally, we are looking at, because of the time that the Economic Development Director, Community and Economic Development Director, does spend in economic development, allocating one quarter of the salaries to the Economic Development Fund. Moving on, police, we are, based on staffing and needs, we are looking at reducing two part-time positions in 3-1-1. And as you've seen from the weekly and monthly reports for 3-1-1, the volume is there. We've just been able to handle that volume very efficiently. And we get a lot of praise internally. I know that residents have really started using 3-1-1 over the last, it's now, 18 months. But our departments also rely on it, and it's been very effective. We also, as a part of the Police Department Union Contract, they are allowed to receive payouts for sick leave, for, I shouldn't say sick leave, for leave that is banked and is unable to be used due to the requirements of the job, that they are just not able to get to take that time off. We are looking at the last several years as an average and saying that we can reduce the amount that we budget for that leave by $50,000. At one point in time, this was all budgeted in the Human Resources Department and tracked that way. In the past two years, we've decentralized it to the fire department, to the police department, and Human Resources still handles the non-sworn.
Alderman Rainey.
But, Marty, this isn't the only time we've reduced that. I mean, we've made other adjustments in the policies that relate to not having as much payout.
That is correct. We, and we did make attempts this year in our contracts. It was really a stand-pat this year. For instance, police, which has some of the larger banks, they're just right close to the federal limit. And at one point, they were well over what the-
Hundreds, $100,000 plus on individual.
So, you know, those are, those didn't drop by contract, but the actual amount that newer officers are accumulating is not near what we've had on the books.
In the Health Department, I've already mentioned the Crisis Intervention Coordinator. And I also mentioned that I've gone to the Mental Health Board to ask their advice on this. You'll notice it's 10 months. I'd like to go back to the Mental Health Board and make sure that what we're proposing to do makes sense. If we can do this without hiring a full-time IMRF of all employee, I'd like to try to do that. So, the money that's allocated here is just 10/12ths of a budget of what would be a full-time person. If we can get the job done and do it in a different way, I'd like some flexibility to do that. But wanted to get the money in the budget, so that's the $85,000 that's the add.
Alderman Burris, did you have a question?
I actually now have two. My first question was to Marty about the payout amount. What is the most that a police officer can have on the books for a payout?
I don't have that right with me. I know that we were at 500 hours accumulated presently of vacation and holiday. Is that correct, Chief? I think it was 500? 480? No, that's the, oh, you're right. 400, I thought that was the federal limit. So, that limit of 500, we do have some folks that were grandfathered in above that. And, but as they use it, they do come down to the limit. And once they get below the limit, they can't go back up past it. So, you know, the most is that 480, 500 hours.
Okay, thank you. And that, so my second question is actually to Mr. Bobkowitz. On the, as you were talking about, the addition of the Crisis Intervention Coordinator and having it a 10-month possibly position, did you explore it all doing a contract, on a contract basis, with any of our not-for-profits that could do a similar service, similar to what we're doing with the Youth Job Center on youth employment?
And Alderman Burris, members of the council, I had gone to the, to the Mental Health Board. Carl, I don't know if you recall how many months, but it's been six-plus months ago. And that was the question I asked. And the response I got from the Mental Health Board was that there was not a partner that they thought would be in a position to take this on. I'd like to go back one more time before we hire staffer and ask that question to see perhaps, again, they had proposed, in the response to my question, a three-position team. I don't believe we have the resources to do that. So, I'd like to have the council, with the council's approval, take them this amount of money and see how far I can stretch it. And if it's with an employee, so be it. If it's with a category of part-time employees, if it's a part-time employee and some contract time. I think once I have a dollar amount and able to go back to the, to the Mental Health Board, they may have some other ideas. I think the, the question I asked was a very broad one initially. Now, with a specific dollar amount, I might get a more specific answer. So, that's why this is just a 10-month, because I, with the full knowledge that it will take the first couple of months of the fiscal year to sort it out.
Thank you.
Alderman Rainey.
I think this is one of the few mistakes in this budget. We, we fund, I don't know, 10, 20 organizations, all of which creep into crisis intervention counseling, some of them full-time, some of them more or less, that we are putting $85,000 in this budget for something that we are already funding various organizations to do, I think is just a mistake. And I hope that you can prevail upon them to consider this effort. We have a township that we cannot get rid of that, that addresses crisis counseling for a segment of the population. Then, we have every other organization, they can, they can do this job. I, I don't recall, and I don't want to take up everybody's time here tonight, I do not recall the discussion about the need for the city of Evanston to employ a counselor, Crisis Intervention Counselor. crisis intervention counselor. I don't recall that. The Police Department has, what do you call it, victim witness people. I mean, all these people are out there. I, I just can't support this. I, I don't understand where it came from.
And it came from me-
Remind me.
And it came from me, Alderman Rainey, in my, in my discussions with staff who are overwhelmed with, you know, specific individuals in the community who end up on our doorstep, and we don't have the ability to help them, and the organizations that are funded by the Mental Health Board largely don't have the ability to fund. I think this is a larger issue.
That's baloney. They can, they can help, and we ought to insist on it.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, perhaps what might be useful, if this is something the council would like to discuss further, is perhaps we can ask the Chair and the Vice Chair of the Mental Health Board to come and talk about, because they spent about six months discussing this, and they could at least share their thinking with the council. I'm not very, Alderman Rainey, I'm not married to, to how we get where we need to get. It's just we have people who are presenting themselves to city staff, and the problems and the challenges they have in their life far exceed the resources that we have. And when I went to the Mental Health Board, largely thinking along the lines that you and Alderman Burris have been talking about, and the response I got from the Mental Health Board was hire more staff.
Yeah, of course.
I honestly was a little surprised. But they are the group that we, we turn to for this advice to council, and I will be happy to invite them to your next budget meeting, and perhaps they could provide a little bit more detail, more than I'm able to this evening, about why they think this is the, the solution that best makes sense.
I think we need to question any organization that takes six months to discuss this one issue. That's what I think.
Very well.
Alderman Grover.
I think, Mr. Bobkowitz, you just answered my question, which was, could we have more information, either in writing or with the Mental Health Board?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Fill in the blanks here. Thank you.
Alderman Burris.
Yes, along the same lines. Could I, could we have a list of the agencies that are receiving city funds from CDBG as well as the Mental Health Board-
Certainly.
...that are doing crisis intervention? I mean, several of us have been on CDBG previously, but to have that list in front of us, I think would be extremely helpful.
You bet.
Alderman Holmes.
I just think this is a deeper conversation. We had a similar conversation last week in the Mayor's Task Force on You. Yeah, that's the one, right. I'm trying to remember which one it was. In terms of accountability back from some of the not-for-profits that are providing service. Yes, we did. So I think it's a much deeper conversation that we may need to have. I don't know what committee or whatever, but I, I just think it's much deeper than just this one particular budget item.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, it may make sense to either put a dollar amount aside and have that discussion, and then with the results of that discussion, at least have some flexibility. Again, I come to you this evening with, with my, my best understanding of the folks I've reached out to. If there's a better way to do this, great. My bottom line is there are people in Evanston hurting that are coming to our city staff, and our city staff are, are well past extended in the, in the ways they're trying to deal with this. And this is an issue as a community, I think we need to spend some time coming up with some solutions.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to reiterate the need. I talked to the city manager for some time over the summer about a situation in the Fourth Ward and working with Alderman Wilson on it. And it was clear that city staff was really not equipped to have the time or the ability to deal with this particular issue. And I think that the economy, especially foreclosures, there's all sorts of societal pressures on some people that sort of fall outside the parameters of what we have been serving. And it's very clear to me that, that we, we need someone doing this, whether it's someone who is working with, you know, within an already organized group or not. I'm happy to look at, you know, where the funding comes from, but I think definitely the need is there.
Thank you. Alderman Grover.
The list of agencies that receive purchase services funding through the Mental Health Board are on page 97 in the Health Department section of your budget package.
Thank you much.
Begins, I believe, with Child Care Network. Ten, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Alderman Grover, are you finished? Thank you. Alderman Rainey.
Well, nobody questions that the need is there. It's just that we need to refer people to the organizations that tell us they're doing this work. And that goes to Alderman Holmes' point. Whoever checks up on these people, I mean, you know, I mean, that's the issue. So we're funding them to do crisis intervention. Believe me, we are. They need to be doing it. You look at, you look at the connections for the homeless, at all the tasks they claim to do. Look at Family Focus, look at this one, that one. They're out there. They, North Shore Senior Center, they're all out there. We're funding them, and they need to start stepping up to the plate. Not a public, it's not a City of Evanston function, I don't believe. If we didn't have those groups, then it would be, but we do have them.
Thank you. Alderman Grover.
I think that what we'll find is talking to the Mental Health Board and getting the report, that they do lots of meaningful outcome measures for their services, and it's not just a matter of counting people in the door and out the door, counting the numbers, but rather qualitatively, how are they better off having been served? And it was, I think, years ago, the Mental Health Board took on those meaningful outcome measures, and we will, I'm sure, the board will be able to present us with the information.
You bet. We'll let Mr. Lyons go on then with Parks Recreation and Community Services.
Just one last part on the general fund balancing worksheet, and that does deal with Parks Recreation and Community Services. Along the same lines of areas where we've been stretched quite a bit, that is at the Levy Center. This budget proposes increases in staffing at the Levy Center to maintain those services, as noted. It has had a very high utilization, so as mundane as custodial work is, it does need to be done. The custodians also help with the facilities themselves and set up. They are not just there doing maintenance activities. And then the facility supervisors and the office assistant, that is, again, just to provide support to the increased activity at the center. So again, we've referenced this. We are looking at the 27,000 surplus with all of those moves in and out, as we've done in the past. I hope.
Alderman Rainey has a question.
I, I just wanted to mention support for the, the facilities janitor, whatever you call it, Levy Center. It, it is, with a building like that, that is so special, it is very important that not only we provide the physical labor, but the equipment to do the job to maintain that facility. It is a beautiful facility, and, you know, it's 10 years old now, and things start needing to be done at that age. And I, I have just always, always had the same argument when we built the library, that one of the problems with the old library was it wasn't really cared for. And to see buildings like this not cared for is just a crime. So anything we need to spend on maintaining a property such as that, I think is very important.
And members of council, Alderman Rainey, we do have some expenditures in the capital fund for work at the Levy Center, some boiler work, and basically some work on the bones of the center. Just to finish up on the presentation, so again, we are looking at a 7.8 and full-time equivalent reductions, and 2.5 and increases for 5.27, 5.3 reductions in staffing for this budget. I'm pushing the right button. I am not challenged.
Alderman Grover.
Mr. Lyons, in, just to get back to revenue quickly, in your estimates of the athletic tax revenue, the time the budget come out, came out, did you already know about the seventh home game that was added for 2013 against Central Michigan because Vanderbilt bagged on the schedule? So instead of just six home games, there will be seven in 2013.
I believe we did, and we did increase the athletic tax. And we will confirm that.
I just want to make sure you got all seven games, because each game adds significantly. Thank you.
There is some plot afoot to redo Wrigley Field so that it would handle a football game.
We don't want that. I don't think they're talking about it for 2013.
No, but it's something we need to-
Yeah.
...be aware of also.
We've really, at this point, we've already gone through this slide. I don't think we need to go through it again. What I would like to talk about is, so we provide all of the, a lot of ways to balance the budget, then we also provide alternatives. So if there were some of the things that we did not want to do in balancing the budget, once again, we have below-the-line changes, such as what is a 1% property tax worth? It is worth $420,000. If we reduced overtime and part-time in Parks Recreation and Community Services, that would be $270,000. If we increased fees, another 2% across the board. So most likely, that would mean some fees going up more than 2%, and others that we can't raise, not going up at all, $100,000. And then in Economic Development, one of the other, we also don't just look at the general fund, so we are looking at whether or not in the Economic Development Fund, decreasing our community outreach efforts. So that is in a couple of accounts in the Economic Development Fund. We have funds set aside for our development projects, for lack of a better word. We try not to be too specific, because we like to look at all projects as they come forward. And then a, one of the things that we could look at is not taking 25% from the Economic Development Director's salary. So, and then finally, one of the other thing, funds that does need to be looked at is the Solid Waste Fund, and approximately a $1 increase. We would still be well below the market rate in the suburban environment, but increasing the $1 refuse fee would raise $250,000. And that could then also be offset with a reduction in the general fund transfer to the Solid Waste Fund, which is $1,250,000 at the present time. The next few slides all concern capital projects. But can I jump into them quickly and just explain them in an overview, and then throw it open to questions? Because I think that capital projects may indeed create some questions.
Go right ahead.
As noted before, if you look at this table, these are the projects that were rated by the Capital Improvements Team as in most need of getting done. Some of these, when they're rated at this level, it is because they have other funding. So there is 50% of money coming from a grant, or money coming from a TIF fund. So we are leveraging our debt dollars. So that's how they end up with high rankings. As you can see, we're at just under $5.9 million at a request, and that is, again, compensating for our $3.9 million issue this past summer.
Let me just maybe make a couple of comments. Some noteworthy things, you'll see the largest is street resurfacing of $1.7 million. We're also proposing taking $1 million from reserves to increase that dollar amount to $2.7 million. So that is comparable to the amount of money that we've spent in the current year. We really see that there's a need to continue to spend significant dollars on streets. We're not asking the council to approve a list of those streets. Suzette Robinson, Director of Public Works, is meeting with each of you to get a sense of the worst streets in each of your wards. So we will come back to you, if the budget's approved, we'll come back to you. Suzette's here somewhere. Or she's in the, probably in the next room.
Just coming.
But we would plan to come back to you, Suzette, we would plan to come back with a street plan.
The first meeting in December.
The first meeting in December. So thank you for taking the time. I know many of you have already spent a couple of hours each with Director Robinson looking at streets, and I know the rest of you have that scheduled. Gray Park, we're proposing $60,000 for the beginning of a study, or actually, not a beginning of a study, but for design of Gray Park. There's lots of issues, I think, from an economic development perspective on Main Street from Ridge to the lake. And I've talked with Alderman Wilson, Alderman Burris, Alderman Winn about this, and I think this is money well spent. Alderman Wilson feels that there's opportunities for partners, and I agree with him, to help with that project, but this would be money to really begin to move that project forward. It's a wonderful park. I think it has challenges. I think there have been neighborhood groups that have looked at the park and made recommendations. I believe we need to move forward with those, with those changes there. We would continue to make investments in all of our, our major centers. So you see Levy, Fleetwood, Noyes on there, the Farmers Park renovations. I know that that's a project near and dear to many of your hearts, to see that finally come to a conclusion. So that is funded here. The 50-50 sidewalk replacement program is reinstituted in this year's budget. And then I think as you'll go on, Marty, if I could clicker to the, to the next couple of slides. The largest capital project of all here is Davis Street. With the success we've had on Church, we're proposing now to move forward with the resurfacing of Davis, including the protected bike lane there. So a whole number of TIF-funded projects going back on the general fund aside as far as larger projects. The lakefront boat, boat ramp renovation's probably the largest other major project there. So as Marty said, we have looked at this from priority. However, I did kind of put my thumb on the scale at the very end in order to make sure that a few of the projects I've just mentioned made it, because I think from a city-wide perspective, they're really important to the work that we're doing.
Alderman Rainey has a question.
Could, I would whisper this to Alderman Holmes, but she's too far down the road. What is going on with that little brick? It looks like a bench, but it's a little wall at Lake Street and Dodge.
Second wall in West Lake.
Whatever.
Yeah, that's, it's a, it's a west, it's a-
All right. It has had, it has had a black, like, tarp over the top with bricks holding it down for months.
For some time. And, and the reason is, is because the, the stone that has been selected to top it off has become unavailable. And so we are still waiting for the delivery of that stone. It's been a week or two since I've heard the latest. I'm not sure if there's anyone in the room that has the latest, but it's, but Suzette, there's Suzette. It's, it's, it's coming, right? The stone is coming?
Yes.
So it's Christmas, yeah. The bricks, the bricks look to me like weapons. They're just sitting there, and go, I mean, anybody can pick them up.
And we can certainly, after, after the hurricane comes through the next 48 hours, we can absolutely replace them, but-
They, they can't be picked up. They're actually mortared in place.
On top of the cloth?
No, the cloth is actually on top, the cloth is actually on top of the bricks. There's actually plastic and cloth on top of the bricks that is protecting the-
When did you last go by there? About tonight?
No, tonight, I didn't.
They're, they're just sitting there. It's-
Okay. But the, the, the top, as, as the city manager indicated, the, the stone that was originally ordered, they couldn't get the, the massive quantity. We were, we gave the contractor two weeks, in which Friday is their last day, and we indicated that at that point, we would install the precast and, and charge them for, for the work. So the precast, similar to the, the precast concrete that we have in the downtown area, where we redid those planters, the same type of concept.
Is it a planter, or is it a wall?
It's, it's a wall. It's a wall. It, and it's, it's only part, part of it is seating where you can actually sit, and the rest of it is decorative, so.
I think it's all seating, or standing.
No. Well, it's all standing, but you can't sit on, and that's what, why the, the stone is, is made in such a way that you can lean against it, but you can't sit.
Thank you.
Alderman Grover.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes, maybe you can help me here. The Bridge Street project, or Director Robinson, there's a lot of construction engineering for 2013. When is the project supposed to happen? And this one is largely funded through the state of Illinois, am I right?
Yes, it's 2014. If you notice that there's load restriction signs on that bridge, that's probably-
Right.
...the worst bridge that, that we have.
We've been, both been to the community meetings on that engineering meeting.
Okay, most challenged bridge. I'm sorry. That's a better description. Most challenged bridge.
And does nothing to assist our residents who live at the, just across the bridge.
Over the rainbow.
Over the rainbow, right. Over the rainbow, right. Anyway, so it's 2014? We can look forward to that? Great.
Yes.
Thank you.
TIF projects, again, we've, we've talked about the major one on Davis, a whole variety of others scattered around the city. Some grant projects, Mayor Tisdale, you were asking earlier today about the Latour Boree, the Bike Path, so that is funded there. And Mr. Gainer, the Latour Boree and Bike Path project, that money is in hand?
No, we have not received it.
We have not received it? Okay, so we're, that is pending that notification, then. The roof is the design. We received $750,000 for the Noi Center roof from the state of Illinois. We're still in the design process, so we're still unclear if the $750,000 will be sufficient for the entire project. We should know that after the first of the year. Again, more Davis Street, Streetscape issues, the Arrington Lagoon project, money is in place for that to move forward. So a pretty diverse selection. Brandon, can you, oops. Pretty diverse selection of capital projects. So Madam Mayor, members of the council, we can go on to the last slide. That concludes our presentation of the proposed fiscal year 2013 budget. As I said at the beginning of the presentation, we're very proud that this budget really has finally, I think, settled out to being a good balance between revenues and expenditures. We have several meetings scheduled. On Saturday, November the 10th, beginning at 9:00 a.m., will be the next, the budget meeting. That will include the public hearings, all required under law. Residents may come and make testimony on the budget, on the levy, any other issues that they wish to do. We'll also have a discussion about performance measures. If you recall, about five or six months ago, we spent quite a bit of time talking with the council on performance measures. We have, I would think, a citywide set that makes sense based on your feedback. So Godwin Chin of our office, who's been working on that very diligently, will be here to talk a little bit about that. We then have a optional budget discussion, which I would guess would likely be needed on Tuesday, November 13. Then we're looking at requesting adoption of the budget on November 19, with the final approvals of the tax levy on Monday, December 10. So I think we're about one meeting less this year than we've, we've done in previous years. Our sense was that the, the issues were a little bit more straightforward for the council, so we hope we've guessed correctly. We don't want to limit discussion in any way, but also want to be sensitive to all of your time. And as I conclude, I really want to thank our budget team, Lou Gertis, the finance manager, Brandon Dieter, our senior management analysts, Ashley Porta, management analysts, all from our administrative services department. Several of you have commented on the document being a little smaller over the last couple of years. Unfortunately, doesn't mean it's any less work in getting it all together and looking at that. So I want to thank our crack budget team for their good work. And here you have the department directors, other senior managers, they've all worked very hard on this budget. We want to balance the needs of the community with reasonable revenues. I think this proposed budget does that. Madam Mayor, we're here, ready to answer any questions you may have.
Alderman Rainey?
Well, when you were speaking initially, Wally, I put my light on, but turned it off so that you could finish. And you indicated that you were grateful, and our staff was grateful, for the support of the council. And I think I can speak on behalf of all my colleagues here, that at least in, in my experience, I have never worked with a more supportive staff. I think they have shown great support and encouragement and effort in helping us accomplish what we want to accomplish. So I just wanted to say that to you, and to all of you.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Burris?
I would concur with those statements. Thank you. You've done an outstanding job. This, my comment actually goes back to the grant and private donation funded projects. And I've, I've mentioned this to Mr. Gainer and Mr. Bobkowitz previously, but as we continue to look for outside funding from foundations, possibly companies as well, I think we do to do a better job of stewarding that. And when we talk about the lagoon, we need to say the Arrington Lakefront Lagoon. We don't do it consistently. We need to do it consistently. If we're asking people for money, and they're putting their name on something, we need to have it out there every single time. And we're not doing that as, as well as we could. And just as, I think there's a lot of people in the community that are willing to help us out with special projects, we need to be very grateful of that.
Thank you, Alderman Burris, and you're correct. But I would like to point out that we did not ask the Arringtons for the money. They offered it on their own, which I thought was exceptionally gracious.
We said we would name it a certain thing.
All right. Does anyone else have any questions?
So Madam Mayor, what we'll do is, we'll come back. The next budget workshop will then be on Saturday, November the 10th. I think we've gotten a couple of, of questions that we'll follow up with. Will, Mr. Keneven and I will reach out to the Mental Health Board and ask them to attend if they can. We have some communication that they submitted to me a few months back. We'll make that available to the council as well, and be ready to talk further about that.
Alderman Holmes?
On page 205, Mr. City Manager, I'm not sure, maybe I'm reading it wrong. But if I'm reading correctly, why is the youth engagement, or young adults and, youth and young adults, listed as community commission on aging?
I think that's just a typo, Alderman Holmes. We'll make that adjustment.
Or is it should be read from the bottom? I'm just not sure.
Is it read from the bottom? It's read from the bottom.
Oh, okay.
Why is it read from the bottom?
I...
Oh, it took you four years to get used to that. It's read from the bottom. I'm very sorry. We can make that adjustment, or make it at least a little clearer, maybe with some different darker lines or something.
It jumped right out at me. I just want you to know that.
Well, something I also think we do, actually, Godwin started with the bills list, is he shades between sections. Maybe we could, we could shade between sections and have that carry. Thank you, Alderman Holmes. We'll make that adjustment.
All right. I would like to reiterate, you have done a wonderful job on the budget, and I'd like to thank you, City Manager and staff.
All right. Alderman Wilson, do you have a motion to make?
I do. Not so fast. Pursuant to 5 Illinois Compiles Statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene and do executive session to discuss the agenda item regarding personnel. This agenda item is permitted subject to be considered an executive session and is an enumerated exception under the Open Meetings Act. This exception is 5 ILCS 120/2C1.
I'll in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
I'm so busy trying to leave my cookies, but let me keep it right in my bag. I have a little pocket on the side. And there it is, sitting right in my office.
Is that what says? I have 8:35.
Why can't, it looks like the men in hand going around to Friday.
Yeah, I know.
Okay. Oh, okay. I see it now. I couldn't see that in hand.
I happily left the executive session stuff in my office, so...
Do I need to go get it, or?
Sure did.
Well, I don't need it anyway. I did read it. I know what it is. I mean, I know what it is.
I know it's a haste making waste.
That's the computer guy. Would you like to talk?
Yeah, me, me.